Good evening and welcome to Germantown Municipal School District's School Board Meeting, January 30th. At this time, I call our meeting to order. Before we begin, for those that want to be heard tonight, citizens, you can complete a card indicating your desire to address the Germantown Board of Education and give the completed card to our Executive Secretary seated up here at his front table. Comments must be constructive. The School Board will not entertain any disrespectful comments regarding elected officials. And citizens will be allowed three minutes to speak. If we receive more, we may limit to, but at this time it will be three minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, Suzanne Jones, could you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of our agenda with three amendments. We'll be adding Budget Number 49 under 9B. We'll be adding 10E Resolution to Disperse Funds and 10F Student Discipline under Board Action. Do I have the motion to approve the agenda with those amendments? I move to approve the agenda as amended. Second. Roll call.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is passed. Next, we have recognition tonight of some students, teachers.
There is additional seating up front. I don't know why that barrier was placed there, so if you might want to spread out or have additional seating, there's additional seating up here. First, did you know that GMSD has a thriving track shooting program? We'd like to recognize some of their members this evening. Would the track team members please come forward? Track team, come on down. Encourage anyone to get a pass on this one either. You've got to come on down. One coach dubbed them as the Fab Five. Matt Mitchell, Jake Tipton, Owen Harden, Chandler Coon, and Zach Roberts went to the state championship this year as first-time competitors and won. Germantown Municipal Schools are proud of these state champions and cannot wait to see what great things are in store for them. Likewise, the district would also like to recognize Laura Thomas, an 11th grade girl who had great accomplishments as an individual shooter. Laura placed third overall at the state championship in ladies varsity division and 22nd overall out of 559 varsity shooters and varsity athletes, which includes men and women. At nationals, she finished 275th out of 1831, or top 15 percent of all varsity shooters and 23rd of all ladies varsity shooters. Luke Murray, an HHS senior this year, finished 18th overall out of 559 varsity shooters. In varsity athlete at the state championship and in nationals, he finished 170th out of 1831 shooters, or top 9 percent. Their coaches, Tommy Conville and Mark Mitchell, who are extremely proud of their athletes, would like us to read this announcement. This is a team with both men and women, an equalized sport where no experience is necessary. So congratulations to all of them. Do not applaud them. Jake Tipton? Matt Mitchell? Owen Harden? Chandler Coon? Zach Roberts? Laura Thomas? And Luke Murray. I want to make a round of applause for the lucky ones.
One, two, three? One with a flash. One more time. One, two, three? Thank you.
Congratulations. At this time, the Germantown Municipal School Board would like to recognize the chess team from Houston Middle School. Would the chess team please come on down? On December 15th, these four Houston Middle students traveled to the 2016 National Grand Chess Championship. This is their first year as a team, and the GMSD is delighted that they came home big winners, national co-champions along with Dalton School from New York. Over 1,500 K-12 players from around the country competed at this national championship event. Our sixth-grade team, consisting of Logan Wu, Sidney Kong, Manish Rangin, and Cole Stevenson, scored a total of 15.5, tied in points for first, recognized as national co-champions, and received the second-place trophy after the tiebreak. This is indeed a great achievement for our Houston Middle School, Germantown Municipal School District, as well as our city, as they were competing against some of the strongest schools in the country where chess is strong during the school day. Just this last week, and Cole Stephen and Manish Rangin competed in the regional qualifying tournament for Shelby County for the Tennessee State Galactic Individual Chess Tournament, competing against other elementary students in schools with strong established chess programs, Greenwood, Douglas, and Otterwood. Cole and Manish placed in the top eight for the elementary division, fourth and fifth grade respectively, therefore advancing to the state tournament to be held on February 18th in Cookeville, Tennessee. In addition, Logan Wu has been recognized several times in the nation and in the world for his excellent chess playing skills. A two-time national champion, he has traveled to Dubai and Greece to compete against some of the world's best players. You can catch our recent interview with Logan on our Spotlight for Excellence television show at www.gmtvonline.com. At this time, we'd like to recognize each of the individual players. Logan Wu? Cole Stevenson? Manish Rangin? And Sidney Kong? Once again, congratulations to our chess team. And finally, we'd like to recognize one of our staff. This most staff recognition of excellence, Dr. Howell. Will you please join us up here? Dr. Christine Howell teaches English as a second language at Houston Middle School and has recently completed her EDP at the University of Memphis. Germantown Municipal Schools salute her dedication to bettering her craft and achieving this level of postgraduate success. Congratulations. We all know how much time and effort it took to advance her degree. So with this, we'd like to recognize now Dr. Howell. Thank you. Congratulations.
I'd like to add, I worked with Christine at Perclair Elementary. We're glad she's here at GMSD.
We would also like to recognize Dr. Jolie Williams, Assistant Principal at Dogwood. She cannot be here tonight, but she's another one of our educators who just completed her doctorate, so also congratulations to Dr. Jolie Williams.
At this time, I'd like to recognize a couple guests. We have Mayor Palzolo and Patrick Lawden, our City Administrator, and I believe Alderman John Parsons is here as well. Welcome. Next on the agenda is approval of the amendments. Do I have the motion? I move to approve amendments from the 12, 5, 16 Board Business Meeting. Do I have a second? Second. Roll call.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is passed. Next, we have a report from our TLN, our Tennessee Legislature Representative, Ms. Suzanne Jones. And starting, this is my first report, so we'll get it started. We had, Lisa Parker was nice enough to kick off a legislative breakfast for us on January the 4th, where we got all the municipalities' school board members as well as our legislators together to talk about the agenda as they're coming into the 110th session. It was a very successful breakfast. It was the second one we've had. A lot of great movement came out of that. There's a lot of education items on the agenda over this next session that we need to be aware of. The ways that we are going to be, the time that has been spent in January was getting ourselves ready, getting ourselves in a position to be able to bring a voice to Nashville. Some of the things that we are doing is we have started talking about our legislative agenda, which we will bring back in the February work session to talk about which bills which are filed that we would like to support. We also have scheduled weekly calls with our municipalities, the other leaders within the board's legislation, just to talk about what's going on, where we need to focus our efforts. We are also, I will be having weekly calls with an analyst that's responsible for the Senate Education Committee, also scheduling a day trip to get up to Nashville to meet with our legislators before we go to Day on the Hill. What I'm finding is that really keeping the relationship, keeping the dialogue open about the items that are coming up is very important. Bills, the last day for bills to be filed will be February 9th, so as I stated, we will come back with a list of what those bills are that we feel like could really impact our district. The last couple of items are days on the Hill. It seems to be a theme. There's lots of them. The one that we're having is a TSBA Day on the Hill, which will be towards the middle of February, February 20th and 21st. We will go up, we will meet with other districts across the state, as well as with our individual legislators. We will also be having a GMSD Day on the Hill, which is tentatively scheduled for March 29th, where we will get some of our kids from GMSD up on the Hill in Nashville. So we're hopeful that we can really spend this time during the 110th legislative session focused on the key items of legislation related to education, as well as getting our relationships established to have a very strong voice from a municipal perspective. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next is the chairman's report. I'd like to congratulate Lisa Parker, who has been selected to serve on the Tennessee School Board Association Legislative Committee. Thank you for your time for that, to serve TSBA, Ms. Parker. This past week, our superintendent, our Chief Financial Officer, Kevin Jones, our board's secretary, Jay Subarami, and school board members Suzanne Jones, Betsy Landers, Lisa Parker, and myself attended the School Board Academy on the Board's role in school finance in Jackson State, one of those required that all school board members attend annual training. So we all went to Jackson to learn more about our board's role in school finance. School board members last week visited Houston High in Riverdale to see how our one-to-one blended learning is being used in our classrooms. As a board and school district, we are now providing computers, laptops to our students, and we went into their classrooms to see how the one-to-one blended learning is working. I want to thank the teachers, Ms. Wallace, Algebra One, Mr. Hamlet, World History, Mr. Robinson, Human Geography at Houston High School, as well as Ms. Young, 8th Grade Language, Ms. Ponder, 8th Grade Social Studies, and Ms. Humble Davies at Riverdale for welcoming us into their classrooms. We learned a lot from engaging with the students and the teachers. We also toured the nitty-gritty of the Riverdale construction with our city's aldermen last week, with access to all the building. I can say we were very impressed with this new facility and what's going to offer our students and our teachers and our parents. And we look forward to the opening of the school in the upcoming 2017-18 school year. I'd also like to thank Dr. Rayburn and the Houston High School Choir for their performance of Mass of Blue with Will Todd. He's a renowned jazz pianist, and he came in and worked with our Houston High School Choir for two days, and they put on a concert last week at GFA. So I want to thank Dr. Rayburn and the choir students for their hard work. Next on the agenda is a financial report. Mr. Jones?
Do you have your financial reports as of and for the month ending December 31, 2016? Looking at the general purpose or school operating fund, right at $8 million in total assets and liabilities and fund balance. Federal projects, a little over $18,000 in total assets and liabilities and fund balance. The same amounts in the cafeteria fund of $147,000. Capital projects, $1.3 million. Health insurance, right at $1.8 million. And the OPEP trust, $1.2 million. And right at $61 million in our fixed asset or plant property and equipment account. The CIP, our Construction in Progress amount has been updated to right at $6.4 million for the Riverdale project. On the statement of revenues and expenditures, we've added a month column so that you can now see what was received or spent for the month. Wanted to point out a couple things. In the health insurance fund, looking at medical claims to date at $1.8 million, we have about $250,000 due to that fund in reimbursement, so that brings it down to right at $1.5 million, or 50 percent of total budgeted. A couple comments in the cafeteria fund. Aramark did have an inventory adjustment to their cost of sales retroactively, so that increased our December billing by a little over $20,000, and there's a separate detailed explanation that's been provided to you. We transferred in a little over $70,000 for operating purposes, and the deficit reported year-to-date for Aramark is a little over $36,000, and currently that would be reimbursed to us. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
One of the objectives for the board and our strategic plan is goal number one, to maximize student potential. One of the areas where we actually have data at this point because we haven't had state testing yet, is in our STAR Early Literacy, which measures the grade levels that students are reading on in kindergarten and first grade. So what we do is we give each student a pre-test before they walk through our boards to see how many of those students walking into kindergarten and first grade, for example, are already reading at their grade level. We have a very large number of students who read several grades above their grade level. This does not measure that, but we don't have that for this purpose. We're really measuring who is reading on or above grade level, and it can really show their growth during the school year. So we have our second set of data that we can share with the board and with the audience. With that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Academic Advancement, Dr. Carter.
In October, we gave a strategic plan update on this same goal, and we looked at kindergarten, and students reading on or above grade level at the October benchmark was at 13 percent. And so we are pleased to present to you that students at the winter benchmark assessment have moved up to 48.9 percent that are reading on or above grade level. And so that shows us a growth 35.9 percent. And then for first grade, we are also showing a large growth number there. At the fall benchmark, we had 63 percent that were scoring on or above grade level in reading, and then at the winter benchmark, we showed 91.2 percent, so a growth of 28.3 percent. So we are very pleased with these results.
So just to clarify, we are making good progress. I'm excited to see how the students are going to perform at the end of the year, but know that we are making tremendous progress with these students. And not only are they reading at or above their grade, they're reading far above their grade levels. So at the end of the year, we will show you how many of our students who in first grade, for example, are reading at third and fourth grade level. We'll show you some really good metrics for how these students are really progressing. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent Manion. At this time, we'll have citizens to be heard again. Comments must be constructive. The School Board will not entertain any disrespectful comments regarding elected officials. Citizens will be allowed three minutes to speak, and we probably will have you stick to that because we have several people speaking tonight. First to come forward is Steve Wiggins.
And if we could use this first mic over here? Starting now, yes, make sure your mic's on. I don't know much about my mic. I'm Steve Wiggins, and I represent, among many of us here, the Yester Oaks neighborhood. And we're wearing red. You can lift your hands if you wish, I suppose, but, and this is about the school which is being proposed to be built on the Warwick property. And the reason why I'm coming is just to talk about the fact that my wife and I moved here two years ago from Los Angeles, and we spent a considerable amount of time looking through Germantown, looking for exactly the perfect neighborhood, and we feel like we found it here. We live on Sycamore Trail Drive, and so it was very concerning to us when we found that there was a school being proposed in the property literally right behind us. If there was a school closer to us, it would be a homeschool at that point. And not only that, but that there were going to be entrances to the school, which would not be mainly used on Poplar Avenue, but would be coming literally right in front of our home and going and flaking our home. And it's very concerning to us, and I don't necessarily represent all of these people. A lot of us are going to speak, I suppose, but it's very important to us because, you know, we have a lot of children that are there, we have a very quiet neighborhood, and now it's going to open up our neighborhood in a way that we don't believe is advantageous to the overall well-being of the community that's living there. We have, very close to us, on the same block, the Bodine School. Then, of course, we have the traffic which comes back and forth from St. George's, and then we have, oh, there's another one that I can't remember. Dogwood Elementary, obviously, is right down the street. And so we're just calling to voice concern about that, and quite frankly, our opposition to that school being built there because of the way that it's going to disrupt our neighborhoods. And I mean, I know the school has to go somewhere, right? We understand that. But when we bought our homes, and we even had people say to us, you know, we think maybe it would help your property value if there was a school so close to your house, but we didn't buy our homes in order to sell them. We bought our homes in order to live there. We bought our homes in order to stay in these neighborhoods as long as we possibly can. And given the congestion of schools that are there, we have very high concern and quite frankly, great opposition to the idea of another school, seeing as how there's already three within a mile and two within two or three blocks already. And so those are our concerns. It's mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we continue, I might add, to the students that were here to be recognized tonight, if you want to leave, you're more than welcome to leave at this time. You don't have to sit. Next citizen to be heard is Jim Thaddeus.
Yes. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly to you about your plans for a new school. I can't argue plans for a new school, and I can't, and it's not here to tell you about it's okay to have a new school. I fully support it, just not in my neighborhood. My concerns are for Johnson Park. It is a great venue. We're losing green space left and right. This is enjoyed by many people, and the people that enjoy it are like me, retired. I see my fellow geriatrics out there, and we're staying healthy with that park and becoming less of a burden if we continue to stay healthy. So I'm concerned about the fact that we would lose valuable park space that this city desperately needs. We are a confined city. We have to travel a lot of the way forward, and this park offers a lot of people, bikers, hikers, people using the sports fields to their advantage. I think it would be a mistake to do that. My second comment is about Johnson Road. Of course, I live right off of Johnson Road, and it is narrow, and we have more bike traffic than we have anything else, well, other than the fire department traveling down that road. So if there was a consideration for a school in that area, it would have to go with a plan to expand that roadway in order to accommodate the traffic and prevent potential trouble with literally the bikers using Johnson Road as a travage path north and south. So those are just my comments briefly. I thank you for the opportunity, and I hope that you can come to a decision in my favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next to speak is William Wilson.
Good evening and thank you for giving me the opportunity. I want to just touch on a couple things. If I look at the decision from the point of view of the board, it seems to me to be obvious as a board or a citizen of Germantown that, given the rank of the Warwick property at third public acceptance, it fell only one point better than Johnson Park. Its cost is equivalent to, if not a little more than, the Roerger Schaefer, and Roerger Schaefer ranked first. You yourself had mentioned the zoning headache that it might create, given that you have Farmington and Dogwood. The population lives south of Poplar, does not really serve well at this point. If Mr. Hopson would agree to your offer to sell you his schools, then you might be in a different position right now, and I understand that, but to offer a school that would be able to serve the growth potential in the existing families that are in the southern portion of the city seems to be the most prudent decision to make, given the land that you have to develop there, the ability to expand to a middle school as you anticipate needing to do in the future. The Warwick property, as Steve has mentioned, to me doesn't, and I live off of, on Washington Way, which is three doors down from where we're which is three doors down from where Warwick property is. And from my experience, knowing Bodine with just seventy-two students, morning and evening, the congestion that is created by just the one school with just seventy-two students. Adding a school at Warwick with all avenues open, my street, Washington Way, or Windy Oaks, or Sycamore Trail, with seven hundred, or I'm not sure exactly the number of possible students that would be at the new school, I can't fathom how many different ways that parents who are clever and want to avoid the line coming in off of Poplar where there'll be, you know, extensive amount of time delay to get there. So they'll look for ways to get around it. Safety is a major concern for us as well, given that we don't have sidewalks and don't want to develop sidewalks. We bought our house the way it is. We like the way it is. So we hope that you might consider avoiding the Warwick decision, but instead choosing something more like the Brewer Schaefer because of its offering to have expansion in the future, its cost, its limited need for development. It's serving the southern side of Germantown, side of Poplar. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tim Fols.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for serving on the school board. As we saw earlier, we are so blessed to have great schools, great staff of work. Can't say enough good things about GMSD and our leaders. You may be aware that a residential neighborhood was planned to gate community on the Warwick property just before the recession hit. The zoning commission met here, I'm not sure if it's the name of the commission, but we talked to them a bit about ingress and egress through Washington Way. Because it is a small street, small caliber street, can be widened. There are no sidewalks. They basically decided that a gate could be put in for emergency access only by police and fire. So that precedent has been set. So really, that takes away ingress and egress through Washington Way. That is set as precedent. So I understand that is a shortcoming of this property. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is David Bard? Is that right?
Beyer.
Beyer.
First, I wanted to say thanks for the opportunity to speak. My number one concern for tonight is opposition to Johnson Road Park. You've probably already seen my email, and you know where I already stand on that. And I'd first like to ask anyone that opposes Johnson Road Park to raise their hand. Oppose? Oppose, if you oppose Johnson Road Park. Secondly, school's got to be built somewhere. Contradictory to the last two speakers, I think the Warwick property makes the most sense if you have access from Poplar and you don't go through the neighborhoods. You know, on Poplar, everybody can get to quickly. One of the main issues, I think, is safety and accessibility. Johnson Road, Johnson Road Park, traffic's a nightmare already. Forest Hill Irene is just as bad. If you've ever been on Forest Hill Irene, Poplar Pike, at a red light in the morning time, it's already twenty to thirty cars deep. You know, three or four cars go, you sit there. With more school buses, more traffic, more parents, that would be worse, that situation. Secondly, you've got everybody going to school and to work through Germantown, Carrickville people. Well, Carrickville people, if they know there's a school on Poplar, they can take Winchester, they can take Poplar Pike, they can take Farmington, they can take Wolf River. There's a way around if you have the Warwick property and you have an entrance on the front of Poplar, not the back. Forest Hill Irene, the way around that, Houston Levy. If anybody's ever went down to Houston Levy in front of the broker, you're all alone. That's not an option. Getting to Hacks Cross would be a nightmare. I think the safest location would be Warwick. The easiest accessibility would be a Warwick. And that's where everybody can make adjustments. A new way to work, a new way to school. It's centrally located. No matter where you live in Germantown, you can get there pretty quick. And if you have Poplar, it can be easily widened. You know, it would be safe for buses to come and go. You know, the fifteen or twenty minutes people unload and go, you know, that fifteen or twenty minutes people can easily go other directions at that time of the morning. And y'all do all a great job. Mr. Manuel does a great job, and thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you. Next is Elizabeth Simonia. Simonia?
Good evening, Elizabeth Simonia. My husband and I have owned our home on Lake Goat since nineteen eighty-six. Our grown kids attended Dogwood School. I represent a huge majority of neighbors who, surrounding the Warwick site, do not want to see a school built there. The only way out of our neighborhood, from Brandonmere all the way to Bragden, is Dogwood Road, which is a major thoroughfare for us to get anywhere we want to go. We're affected daily by traffic on the street by four schools. And if the Warwick site is chosen, all of our small street schools south of Dogwood will experience minimal recent traffic. I'm one of the ones who's sent you recent emails, and thank you for your responses. Some of those emails included pictures of the traffic, the lineup in front of Dogwood, all the way to Forest Hill Irene and Hawkins, the lineup, Dogwood School that is, the lineup in front of St. George's, all the way to Kimble Road. And both of those schools, traffic does stop completely where the guard lets cars in and out. Then also, the private schools were left off the map that you all provided, but they do make a huge impact in our neighborhood. I mentioned St. George's, but Bodine is right around the corner from my house. And every day, we experience the traffic lining up on Yester Oaks, and it curves around the corner onto Dogwood. So this small street, Yester Oaks, is the only entrance to the Bodine School. And it's also one of the major streets leading to the sub-streets for the Warwick property. This is the new map shown. So just to reiterate the places of all these schools, Farmington is one point two miles from Dogwood. Dogwood is one point one miles from St. George's. Bodine is zero point seven miles from Dogwood and zero point six miles from St. George's. All just too close together. And then if you add another school in that, some of the Warwick site, the entrance to the Bodine entrance on Yester Oaks is zero point three miles from the Sycamore Trail Substreet, zero point two five miles from the Windy Oaks Substreet, and zero point two miles from the Washington Way Substreet. So there's just so much traffic going right into our streets, and if those sub-streets are used. Most of our neighbors believe that the Schaefer-Brower site would be the best choice for the new school. Seems that having a school south of Poplar would be more convenient for students living south of Poplar, who currently travel north of Poplar to go to school. And then Mr. Manuel provided me with a school zone map with the numbers of how many students live in the zone, who goes to what school. And he also explained to me that Dogwood and Farmington are experiencing this growth. But a lot of this growth is due to the removal of Germantown's school from the mix. So from looking at the numbers in the map, it just seems that the Schaefer-Brower site would better serve Germantown as a replacement. Also, I understand that Forest Hill Irene is to be widened with a school or without a school. And if the Schaefer-Brower site is chosen, I understand that there would be two entrances on Forest Hill Irene. So I went to this site the other day, just to look at it. I went back into that neighborhood, and it's very upscale homes with a lot of deep lots. But the main difference between their neighborhood and our neighborhood, well, forgetting the price of the homes, the size of the lots, is that their neighborhood would not experience any extra school traffic like our neighborhood would.
You're three minutes. Is that, can you finish?
Yes. So on behalf of my neighbors, I'd just ask that you consider the Schaefer-Brower site. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Walters?
Hi, good evening. Thank you also for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Rob Walters. I'm a Germantown resident, liberal plantation code. I've been a city resident for over thirty years. And I'm here today, tonight, asking you to eliminate Johnson Road Park for any future consideration for a school site. To date, I have participated in many of the processes leading up to this point, the January fifth Public Information Session, the January seventeenth Board of Educational Work Session. I've reviewed all the information that the district has posted online. I've completed feedback forms and the survey. And I've continued to be consistent in my perspective. Johnson Road Park is a gem in our city. We all know that it's used very frequently by city residents and others in our community. The disc golf courses, the athletic fields, the walking trails, the lakes, the sports fields all encourage a healthy lifestyle, which is extremely important in our community these days. Taking this land away would negate that opportunity for many people that use it. Many residents that live adjacent and around the park purchased their homes knowing that a permanent city facility was here. They did not purchase homes around undeveloped property. After the professional and objective analysis that all of y'all heard and you shared with the community, the engineers, the city officials, realize that there are more suitable sites than Johnson Road Park, taking into consideration the topography, the land prep size, the size of the site allowing for future expansion. Many of y'all have shared with me in feedback to emails that this is a fifty-year decision for the school board and the city. I ask that you not be shortsighted in looking at a Johnson Road Park as a smaller size presenting less expansion opportunities for the city and the school board. After that, in reviewing the information, I believe that the sites south on Forest Hill present better opportunities. Based on the growth projections that superintendent has shared, the undeveloped properties in that area present the largest opportunity for residential growth in the city. And I believe that is warranted to take into account longer-term growth or aspect of this decision. So please don't be shortsighted in taking that into consideration. I ask that you continue to work with the city and do what's best, not only for the students, but for our city residents long-term. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jimmy Wetter?
Hi, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for all of their hard work. And I know this is a tough decision, but y'all make a good decision, whatever it may be. I have concern about Johnson Road Park because of many reasons, but I've taken some of these off of the matrix and off your website. There's concerns with the deep ponds that are unsafe. There's a cell phone tower present. There are tin wells that are on the property that will need to be serviced. Not only will the cell phone tower need to have a workman present to work on it and come through school property to get there. It directly touches three neighborhoods, the Highlands, Devonshire, and Old Plantation Way. But there's no direct access, only through private property. So only the homes that are contiguous to a proposed school site would, there'd be access for children. Another problem would be that Johnson Road would have to be improved because of the traffic situation. I don't believe that that cost has been factored into your cost matrix when you considered the site. The, not only the construction, but also the buying of property from landowners. And we don't know how far down Johnson Road would need to be widened because it is a big road. Secondly, just the size of the property. Only twenty usable acres for a school site, whereas the Breyer-Schafer property, that's thirty-eight, I believe. The Reeves property, close to thirty, and the Warwick property is approximately thirty acres. Twenty acres would not be ample, in my opinion, for athletic fields and the school site and parking. It would be crowded, and the other three sites would be better. Many trees would have to be torn down. There are probably eight to ten acres of nice oaks that would have to come down. And we don't need to lose not only park space, but trees in our city. The only other thing I'd like to mention would be just how much better the Reeves and/or Breyer-Schafer site would be because of less cost of site work and the size of the property and room for expansion on those sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Zachary Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've come to speak in favor of the Warwick property. You've heard from a small but localized group opposing the Warwick and Johnson Road properties, but interestingly, there's been no one speaking really directly in favor of the Forest Hill Irene properties. Yes, there are a number of people that, yes, it's south of Poplar and I'm north of Poplar, but those properties really have nothing to offer to the students that are going there. If you recall, a few months ago, a lot of these same people were in the room speaking against the Winchester location because it is not a neighborhood school. The Warwick location is the only location under consideration right now that is a neighborhood school. These Forest Hill Irene properties, they do, they are contiguous to some neighborhoods, but these are neighborhoods that are very sparsely populated with acre-plus lots. The Warwick location, this is a reasonably dense neighborhood. There are a number of students, a large number of students, that can walk or bike to this school. And that's critically important to the health of our students and to a neighborhood feeling for our school, which we all felt so passionately about months ago, but are now turning our back on. Additionally, I think it's cost-effective because it's centrally located. It means the least bus miles driven, which is important because the cost of oil is sure to exponentially increase over the life of the school. And that would be important from a taxpayer perspective. In conclusion, I ask you all to remember the way that the vast constituency felt months ago when we spoke out against schools that were not neighborhood schools. And please consider the one school that's still in consideration that is a true neighborhood school and would be best for the vast majority of the students and families and taxpayers paying for and attending that school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dennis Bonderwood?
Thank you very much. I'm Dennis Bonderwood. I live at ninety-three forty-eight Forest Hill Lane, and I also own the property twenty-nine oh-three Johnson Road. Both of those are immediately across the street from Johnson Road. I also speak for Jane and Sandra Maynard, who are our neighbors and also are directly across the street from Johnson Road. We are very impacted by, would be very impacted by the selection of Johnson Road Park. I just wanted to, first of all, thank all of you. I was shocked within an hour or two when I wrote emails that I received responses from every single one of you. So thank you very much, and thank you for your time on the board. This is the only site where you have to take something away from the neighborhood before you make the decision to put something there. We've been there thirty years. About twenty years ago, when Marist Albagio developed the property at the corner of Johnson and Poplar, the motivation for those fifty zero lot lines was senior living. I don't think there are kids in that neighborhood. This is not a neighborhood of kids looking for a school. It's just a bunch of old people. And we use Johnson Road Park every single day. I don't know what the impact to our water facility is. We just went through a very large expansion of water. Those are wells or tanks that are underground, adjacent and on Johnson Road property. We're certainly going to need more water in the future, and it seems like the space there should be preserved for that growth. Anyway, so now you have heard from people on Johnson Road, around Old Plantation. That neighborhood is not a neighborhood of children looking for schools. Again, it's people who have been there for many, many years. Again, it's people who have been there for many, many years. People came into that fifty or so zero lot line community and they use Johnson Road Park every single day. I ask that you don't take the park away from the neighborhood, just put a school there. All the other things that have already been presented, we feel the same way about Johnson Road, traffic, but most importantly, the park, that you would be taking before you did something positive there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, everybody who came to speak tonight. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight is the Teacher Leadership Network Grant Contract. Budget Amendment Forty-Six about state schools. Budget Amendment Forty-Seven, the Teacher Legislative Network Grant. Budget Amendment Forty-Eight regarding laptop and laptop maintenance. Budget Amendment Forty-Nine, fireball plans for the school. Also on the consent agenda is school fees and activity costs. New policy, students in foster care, revision of policies, second reading, family medical leave absence, family homeless students, student equal access. In addition, first reading board policies, parental and family involvement, grading, honor roll awards, class ranking, testing programs, attendance, pregnancy and truancy, zero tolerance, offensive revision, administering medicines to students revision, child abuse and neglect revision, guidance and school counselor revision, students' accident report update. And many of these policies are being revised due to changes that have come down from our legislators. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda? Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is passed. Next, under Board Action Items, first is approval of grant of tenure to the recommended teachers.
Yes, just to clarify what we spoke about during the work session. In order for teachers to get certified now under the new Tennessee statutes, they have to work for the district five years. And in their last two years, their fourth and fifth year, they have to have scores of four or five, and that includes their observations and also their test scores of their students. So it's a very rigorous process in order for teachers to receive tenure. The board has a list, but I'd like to read these individuals' names. This isn't to recognize them. We want to do that at the next board meeting, so we do want to have a celebration once the board has approved this list of teachers. But they would be Leslie Austin, who's a classroom teacher at Houston Middle School; Amy Moore, who's a speech and language pathologist at Riverdale Elementary School; William Brock, who also worked with the track team that was here tonight. He is a teacher at Houston High School; Leslie Brahm, a classroom teacher at Houston High School; Brianna Gould, who's a classroom teacher at Farmington Elementary; Rachel Hippingley, a classroom teacher at Riverdale; Christine Hingle, who is a school psychologist for the district; Jessica Johnson, who is a classroom teacher at Riverdale Elementary; Lori Matthews, a classroom teacher at Dogwood Elementary; Karen Mills, a special education teacher at Farmington Elementary; and Ben Snyder, a classroom teacher at Houston High School. That is our list of recommended teachers for tenure.
Thank you, Superintendent Daniel. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve. I approve to grant tenure to the recommended teachers.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval of family life curriculum.
We have standards and curriculum that are set by the state. The board actually chooses which curriculum they think aligns best with those standards. We went over the timeline during the work session about how it has been approved and how the information has been posted online. And also, we had it available at the district office for parents to come review. And at this time, we are recommending approving that curriculum.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the GNSD family life curriculum for sixteen, seventeen school year.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is passed. Next on the agenda is the termination of our ILAs or shared services. Superintendent, do you want to comment?
Yes. When we opened the district, it was beneficial for all municipalities to work together to actually share some services and staff in order to meet their needs. It has been a wonderful process. We could not have opened the doors except for that partnership with the other municipalities. But we have moved to the point now that this board feels, as expressed in the past, that we can do things differently in Germantown and look for ways that we can serve these same programs within our district. So all the districts are passing a mutual agreement to terminate shared services because any services that we want to share, we would then negotiate new contracts for those services. There are some that we would still like to continue, but it is the end of those contracts for shared services. We will be bringing to the board contracts that we want to negotiate with the other districts in our local agreements for CTE, which is an individual that works with Career and Tech Education. His name is Clark Knight. Miss Gann, you may remember him. He's a very good individual that helps with all of our classes and helps us get funding for our CTE courses. We would also like to continue. Mark Doby, who serves out of Arlington, and he works with our energy management system. He gets up every morning at four to five in the morning and looks at all of our heat and air units by computer and sees which units are offline and can diagnose the issues. And many times, we have people there to work on them before the principals even walk in the door. And then the third one that we would like to continue, but we'll break before the board just for transportation. We have one more year in our transportation agreement with Germ Services, and because of that, we would like to continue to work with Carribo for that. But the first step for us is at this time to terminate all of these shared services and then bring those other contracts before the board.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the mutual agreement to terminate shared services on June 30th, 2017.
Second? Do I have a second? Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All that hard work.
It was.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Ove?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is passed. Next on the agenda is a resolution for negotiation of land options. Do I have a motion?
Do you want me to explain what we're doing or the action that we're requesting?
Go ahead.
We've spent a lot of time and gathered a lot of community support with experts in the city through the Site Selection Committee and also hearing all of your voices through the surveys. What we'd like to do at this time is to take the first step. And I know a lot of you want to hear today either yes to Warlock, no to Warlock, yes project. You probably want to hear that tonight because it would be our request for us to go out and negotiate an option on one of these properties and not single in on one, because we're fearful that if we single in on one and we start negotiations, of course, the price is going to rise if they know this is your property. The real step for us, and I think for the community, when they would hear the final step in the selection process, would be when we would come back from that negotiation with the contract and present that to the board to say, okay, we're ready to make an offer on this property and this is the sign. So just know that this is the first step. You may not hear the answers that I think that you're looking for this evening. But that would be our recommendation, is to allow the executive committee, which is the superintendent and the board chair, to go out and negotiate for an option on one of these properties. Also, take into account that this is dependent upon our partnership with the city. They have bonding issues. And I think one of the things that we pride ourselves on is that the city is a triple-A bond rating. And when they look at projects and issues in the city, they're not just looking at schools. They're looking at the fire department, the police department, they're looking at roads, and they really have one pot of money that they're looking at to do this. So know that this is a partnership they have to have with the city in order to get the funding for the process. There are several steps to that. And then also, once we get ready to build a school and work with a school site, know that we're going to have to go through all those processes that the city has in place to really continue to hear the community voice when we're talking about the border zoning appeals, or the design review commission, or the planning commission. And there are going to be several steps. And whatever property we wind up singling on, then we're going to break before the board and also before the city so that they can help to make that decision.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
I move to allow the Board of Education Executive Committee to negotiate an option for one of the four sites selected by the Site Selection Analysis Committee, pending final approval of the land option by the Board of Education for the purpose of constructing a new GNSD school.
Do I have a second? Second. Discussion?
Madam Chairman, a movement. I move to amend the motion by striking the number four and inserting the number three, eliminating the Johnson Road Park site from consideration.
Ms. Searmon, did you get the motion? Is there a second?
Can we repeat the motion just one more time, I think, for Ms. Searmon to make sure that we have it? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I have it in mind. I move to amend the motion by striking the number four and inserting the number three, eliminating the Johnson Road Park site from consideration.
A nice second round. Any discussion?
May I speak to my motion? This was a site that Site Analysis Committee had mixed reviews, mixed motions on. I think a number of individuals here tonight have cited many of the concerns. We ourselves have mulled over, pouted out, to let you know the entire board walked each of the four sites with very long day and very lucky conditions. But we walked each of the sites so that we can personally know what we were voting on tonight. So I think with all of that in mind, I feel it's important. With three sites, we still have three wonderful sites to negotiate for a new school for the GNSD, excuse me, but in consideration of everything, I think the elimination of Johnson Road Park would be the next.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair. Through this negotiation, I think we first, it was first brought to us in regards to one site, and that was back in October, maybe?
September.
And that was the one site on Winchester. And I really believe that the board did not vet that site as well as we should have. But neither here nor there, we had four sites that was brought to us by the Site Selection And statistically, Briar Schaefer was eighty-three percent popular. Warwick was eighty-four percent popular, actually, Warwick lost, if I take into account all the emails that I got. Reeves was sixty-three percent and Johnson Road was twenty-eight percent. Each one of these properties brought pretty much the same in their remarks. The Warwick property, traffic, too close to the schools, Poplar Avenue, impact on neighborhoods, topography, and cost. The Reeves property was close to the railroad, close to retail, traffic, widened Forest Hill Arine, cost, and safety. Johnson Road was north of Poplar, loss of a park, widened Johnson Road, traffic, two large lakes, and safety. Briar Schaefer was a train, widened Forest Hill Arine, traffic, cost, impact on neighborhoods, and safety. One of the things that rang out on each property was traffic, safety, and impact on neighborhoods. When you look at the cost of the site development and the cost of the property, and I'll just take the lowest three. Johnson Road is five-point-two million. The Reeves property is five-point-one million. The Briar Schaefer property is five-point-one million. But the Crestwind property is three-point-seven million. And that's a one-and-a-half million difference. Now, why didn't we not choose the Crestwind property? Well, we did not choose it because we had a very vocal minority of people that said that we didn't want our children going to school on Winchester. But I don't. And like I said before, I really don't think we vetted this property. And Kate, if you'll put that site upon form. What does one-and-a-half million dollars look like? And if you look at it in terms of sales tax, which is where we get our local sales tax, it's about twenty to twenty-five percent of our sales tax revenue. If we could put two or three more saddle creeks in our community, that's what it looks like. What does one-and-a-half million dollars look like in our property tax? It looks like twelve cents. And if you'll notice, this is, and this isn't, this is just an opinion, this is just something that would look like, but this is a neighborhood of two, three-hundred-and-fifty homes. This is a neighborhood school in a neighborhood of two-hundred-and-fifty homes. It's not facing Winchester. It's the back of it, if you'll notice, the green is park, the blue is parking. But it is one-point-five million dollars less than a school that hang in number one, which is one mile away. And like the, like what he said, she's got three schools less than a mile, a mile away.
Four schools.
Five, for the new one.
But what can one-point-five million dollars buy if we choose this property? One-point-five million dollars could change our student-teacher ratio up. And that wouldn't even, one-point-five million dollars, it would be less than one-point-five million dollars. We could fully fund our one-to-one program for grade six or twelve for all of our schools. We could put foreign language in each elementary school. We could put STEM labs in every elementary school. We could put a dance studio in the high school. We could upgrade all the bathrooms in the elementary schools. We could put upgrades to the high school auditorium for our fine arts academy and additional We could put thirty additional teachers in our schools. For one mile away from where we want to put a school. For one mile away from where we want to put a school, we could say and put additional funding. So I would like to make an amendment to the amendment by asking to negotiate an option for one of the three sites and the Crestview site.
Do I repeat that motion, sir?
Well, it's basically just allow the Board of Education Executive Committee to negotiate an option for one of the three sites. The amendment was one of the three sites and add the Crestwind site.
Do I have a second? There's no second, motion is failed. We're back to the motion that Ms. Landers put forth that eliminated Johnson Park site. Is there more discussion on this amendment? Can you repeat that motion, of course? So that everybody has.
Ms. Landers had made an amendment to remove four sites to three strike sites. Yes, by striking four, inserting three and eliminating Johnson Park from the four sites.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Roll call.
This is for the amendment to the main motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. O?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion is passed. We still have one motion on the table, the original one.
It is now three sites.
Was there any discussion on that one?
I would like to say thank you to the Site Analysis Committee for looking at over twenty sites for this decision. I think it would be misleading to say that no site was unvetted. They vetted any site that was available. And they did a very thorough job. So if you want to see anything from any of those sites that were available, it is online right now at gmsd-k-12.com or. And I'm so pleased with the details of information that we received because as we were looking at those properties, it just, those, the top three rows to the top figured clearly. And then we were able to take in community input and balance, balance the two. So I truly appreciate it and thank you to Ms. Landers for her hard work with that committee.
Okay. Roll call on the original.
Original motion, seconded by Ms. Jones. Ms. Parker?
Oh, that's the first one?
Yes.
No.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Ms. O?
Clarification.
Yes, we're going to clarify. We are acting on the original motion as amended.
As amended.
So.
Did we screw up?
So the motion is essentially that we are allowing the executive committee to negotiate for the three sites excluding Johnson Park. That is the motion that is on the table at this time.
Ms. Parker?
I got three, it's never fair. Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. O?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is passed. The motion is passed is that the executive committee will negotiate an option for purchase from three sites, eliminating Johnson Park from the site list.
And I would like to clarify for the audience here that that's when you'll hear the real decision is when we come back from negotiations, board decides to say this is the price they've got. Because I think it's difficult for this board until we know final cost for purchase price and site development cost, we know site development, but that purchase price is going to play an influence in their decision-making process.
Thank you Superintendent. Next on the agenda is a resolution to disperse funds.
Yes, one of the things, and if at this time people want to leave because we're done with the land option, feel free to. One of the things that we had discussed as a board was having twenty-five thousand dollars in an account that we can use for our social clubs and our community organizations. Last year, the board decided to spend that money for the band uniforms at Houston High School. This year, we have spent a very small portion, it's a few hundred dollars, I think we spent on the legislative breakfast thus far. So we have a large portion of that money that the board can choose to spend on. We have two groups that we talked about during the work session that we have a request for small parts of that money. I think that we can, I can verify that these groups are going to do matching funds for these. The first is for the Houston Middle Chess Team. And so I'll read a resolution that we have proposed. The first part is now therefore, the Germantown Board of Education leaves strongly in the efforts of Houston Middle School in the creation of its first competitive chess club. The first-year team has been recently named co-champion of the National Chess Championship. Moving forward, the board would like to encourage growth in both membership and recruitment by hiring a true coach for the team and allowing them to travel. What they're going to be doing is they actually have funds that they are going to provide to parents themselves for T-shirts and for travel expenses. What we would be providing is money to help them pay for a coach, to help them go on to the next levels. So the first part of this is asking for fifteen hundred dollars for that purpose. And we would allocate it to the school account. The second group that has also had a request is the wrestling team at Houston High School. They actually qualified for the team state competition, which is coming this weekend. And then within two weeks, they will also have an individual state competition. They've also done a lot of fundraising on their own to provide for this. But this is a large expense. And they are a low gate revenue team, which means a lot of people don't come to pay to see the wrestling team. I would expect that we would also see other groups like golf or tennis that are also challenged come for, come before the board to ask for this type of service. But you see a resolution before you for fifteen hundred for the Houston Chess Club and three thousand for the wrestling team, and that would be a request.
Thank you Superintendent Daniel. Do I have a motion? I move to approve the resolution for distribution of funds, fifteen hundred dollars to the Houston Middle School Chess Club and three thousand dollars to the Houston High School Wrestling Team. Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. O?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is passed, and I'm sure we'll be receiving a lot of requests.
Yes.
I think we all need to keep in mind, there's a lot of folks out there. Next on the agenda is ten F, student discipline.
The board had received a pass on a student who is seeking enrollment in the district. Their documents say they provide order to seek that. However, the student is currently under suspension from another school district. The recommendation from the administration here would be to honor their suspension from the other district until they have completed that and then be allowed to enroll in our district. The board has essentially three options in this case. They can follow the staff's recommendation to deny maintenance until they, or registration until they've completed that. They could modify that and say after they've served X number of days that we would allow them. Or they could allow them immediately once they approve their documents, registration documents for the district. So that is what is on the table at this time.
Thank you Superintendent Daniel. Do I have a motion? I move to approve the Superintendent's recommendation for the student to complete the assigned placement before being enrolled in a GMSD school. Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. O?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is passed. Is there any business? I just want to make a couple announcements. We have a budget work session on Monday, February thirteenth at three P.M. in the PD room at the district office. Our next board meeting and work session will be on Monday, March sixth. Thank you for coming tonight. Madam Chair.